I call to order this town council regular session. It's March 16th, the time is 5:00 PM. And our first order of business is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, will the clerk take the roll?
Council President Collins.
Here.
Council Vice President Healy.
Here.
Councilwoman Clough.
Here.
Councilwoman McAtee.
Here.
Councilman Veale.
Here.
All members present.
Great. And this is a special meeting here for the town council, although it's a regular session. Our job today is to come to agreement on a preliminary budget. Would you like to describe that, Steve?
The town councils had an opportunity now, after review of the budget in four different sessions, to be able to ask questions and to form questions as far as any type of changes or revisions that they would like to make to the budget that my office has drafted. So this evening, it's really a review by exception. If there are no revisions that are suggested, that budget will become your budget. If there are specific changes that the council wishes, by majority vote to amend that budget, this is the opportunity to do that. The council will adopt a preliminary budget this evening. That preliminary budget will then be advertised for two public hearings. Those two public hearings are scheduled for April 7th and April 8th at 7 o'clock in council chambers. During the period from when a preliminary budget is adopted till their, in a formal budget at the end of the month is that the final budget is adopted, 20 signatures on a request for consideration can be filed. That would ask the council to vote up or vote down specific changes that those 20 individuals would warrant needed specific review. That would be done, so if there was a petition to increase a line item, the council would have to deal with that before they could adopt the final budget. Once the final budget's adopted, the public would still have a right to file for a referendum with 200 signatures, provided that the question to either increase or decrease was in an amount in excess or in excess of $250,000. The referendum questions could be posed as a increase/decrease within the general fund or increase/decrease within the school fund. So that's the budget process that we have been involved in since 2006. So this evening, I had asked the council previous session if there were specific questions that they would like to have addressed this evening with their fellow members to bring them forward. I've given you a memorandum dated March 12th indicating that there were six issues that were presented. Also subsequent to the last budget hearings, we received additional requests through Conservation Commission and Southern Rhode Island Conservation District. I've also posted those. I'll be quite honest, if the materials weren't submitted in December, there's no way I could have considered those proposals. I won't give you an opinion yes or no on either of the two suggestions, since I think both of those are non-administrative matters. They are policy matters at your desk. So if you wish, Abel, you could start out with the first question that you had posed, which was with Washington County Regional Planning Council, the request to increase by $1,000 from $5,000 to $6,000.
Yes. So I sit on the board, of course, representing South Kingstown. The other towns that are our same size, or relatively the same size, are paying $6,000 as their dues. So I put forward that we should kick up to the $6,000 level, feeling that we should do the same. I think that over the next year, I mean, I have no idea if we'll eventually end up signing on to their streetlight purchasing program or some other streetlight purchasing program, but they've really done a good job of laying the groundwork for municipalities to have a big savings with streetlight energy efficiency and just stopping National Grid's gouging. So that's why I came forward with that particular idea. I'm willing to hear what other people have to say, of course.
I think you're posing it as a resolution, so you would ask for a second with your resolution.
Okay, so that's a re-
I think it would be the easiest way for you to handle it.
Okay, I make a resolution to increase-
I would second that.
So, now discussion.
I would be opposed primarily because I'm opposed to any increase over last year's spending. And I understand that we have some contractual obligations where we need to spend some line items, we need to spend more than last year, but I think we should be finding an area to save some money to pay those contractual obligations. But I'm in favor of spending what we spent last year.
I agree. I'm in favor of just what we spent last year.
I am opposed.
So I'm opposed.
I am also opposed, and the reason I say I'm opposed is I have a lot of questions about this. First of all, if we are purchasing these poles, if you will, from National Grid, and they're taken over by a second-party source, and the lighting is going to be contractually based, what happens if these poles come down? What, is it National Grid's responsibility at that point, because we've already purchased them? There's too many questions here. I am opposed to this. I would like to suggest funding of $3,000, and that would be my recommendation until we see what Washington County Regional Planning Board will do. And shame on me if it's really a shining star situation. Now we have two people on the board which we have never had. So I'd like to see a change in Washington County Regional Planning Board for the money that we spend. So I am opposed to spending $6,000.
So Steve, do we have continued discussion, or if we have three votes, then should we move on to the next resolution?
Well, you've posed a question, you've got a second on it, you've had your discussion. You should consider calling a vote and then move on to the next item.
All right, I'll call the vote. All in favor of increasing the Washington County Regional Planning Commission's funding to $6,000, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
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 That resolution fails. What was the next?
The second item was the Peasdale Neighborhood Group. They were requesting an increase of $8,000 from, actually, $7,500 from $2,500 to $10,000.
So I make a, or I propose a resolution to increase the funding for a Peasdale Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative to $8,000 from previous year. Do I hear a second?
I second.
So moved, discussion. So the theory behind this, you may remember when they came to the council during the work session, they're looking to provide matching funds to get a Ripta transart shelter installed somewhere in Peasdale. Their initial spot that they were looking at is near the fire station. I think, you know, they're open to moving that. But these, so it's a 20% match. The $8,000, if we gave it to them, could leverage a $40,000 project. If they're able to secure another couple thousand in funds, they can do a 50,000 project. That's the limit of the size of these projects. And, you know, Route 66 there is a heavily used route. I think it would be a nice addition to the village there.
I did have an opportunity to speak with them, and I expressed a little bit of concern over the potential placement of this bus shelter. And they assured me that the location was not yet determined, and that Ripta might even be reallocating where the stops are, so that they would ultimately have more control over where this would be. I said there was a few, you know, possibilities that might create more problems for loitering, and they agreed. And I think it's a great project. The concern might be if we provide too much funding, you could have other village associations saying, "We want ours as well," and then we'll find ourselves in a position of paying for all of these, which we don't want to find. You know, that being said, I am for giving them a bit more and hopefully seeing this project through for them, with reservations.
Sure. Other comments on-
I think we're premature on this. They don't have a commitment from the state as to the other 80%. We could give them the 10%, the 20%, excuse me, for the bus stop, and they may never acquire the 80%. So with that said, I will not vote to give them that amount of money. I would, however, agree to give both Peasdale and Wakefield Village Associations $1,000 each increase. I do agree with you, Rachel. If you give to one, you have to give to the other, so-
Right. I'm curious, I would like to see the Wakefield and Peasdale getting the same amount. Right now, Wakefield gets $3,000 and Peasdale gets $2,500, so I would propose that if we were doing that, Wakefield remains at $3,000 and Peasdale comes up to that 3.
Well, before we get to that, that would be, I think, a separate resolution.
We're jumping ahead of it.
The only thing I wanted to say about that is I think the Wakefield Association has a lot more area to deal with, a lot more businesses to take into account. So in that respect, you know, they certainly have a lot more obligations, financial or otherwise.
Right. I think this is a special circumstance, not where we'd be looking to increase their funding to this level on a year-on-year basis. The way I view it is more of a capital project for the town, which is being facilitated by this neighborhood group. You know, the funding from Ripta is out there waiting to be accessed by any group that comes up with, you know, significant funds. So, you know, if we gave them the $8,000, they would be able to leverage that $40,000, that's how, or the $32,000. So that's the way I view it. I would, if we did approve this funding, I would ask for it to come out of the rainy day fund, since it's a capital project.
And then going, excuse me, and then going forward, they would next year go back to their original, like this would be a one-time. I agree, I do think it's kind of a quality of life. If you're standing there waiting for the bus, a shelter shirt would come in handy. It's a quality-of-life issue. I think it's a great project, and if they could get the funding for it, a 20% investment isn't bad, and I think that that would be worth it.
I think it's a great project, but I think they could come back once they've secured the other money. I don't, would it be advisable at a later date, Steve, that once they have got a commitment for the 80%, that then they come forward? Or would that be something we couldn't do?
No, because you could provide the funding not now but later for the contingency account. You've got a $60,000 general fund contingency. If they were to come back to you after the start of the fiscal year and said, gee, we got the $32,000 and we need the $8,000, the council could vote to forward that directly to them rather than having it in the line item as a contribution. Obviously, it reduces the flexibility that you'd have with the contingency account at a later time. However, for the most part, we've really never spent any of the contingency funds other than on a couple of the years that I could think of in the last 10. So if you didn't deal with it tonight in terms of committing funds, and they came to you and said, "We're ready for the funds," you would have an opportunity, but it would have to be a charge at that point to an existing account, which would be the contingency.
And also, that would give us a chance to oversee where they're going to place this bus stop. If we just hand them the money, we're going to lose any kind of advisory role that we may have in this, and I think it would be better to go about it. Let them secure the money, come up with the plans and present it to us. We're giving money for something, we don't know exactly where they're going to put it or what the project is.
And even though they have made some type of a verbal commitment or commitment to us, how do we know this is going to come to fruition? Do we have a signed contract?
No.
Do we have anything?
From what I've gathered is they, it's kind of a cart before the horse thing where they needed us to commit a certain amount of funds before they could go forward and secure the grant. So maybe what we could do is, you know, talk to her, talk to Therese Martin and say, you know, "With some stipulations, we'll help you get this grant going with the condition that maybe we have some placement issues," and make sure that's where the money's going.
Right. That's what I think. Wait till they, it develops better.
I need more information. That's where I stand on this one, but sorry.
No, it's a good project.
Right.
Oh, there's no question about it.
Recognizing that it's a good project, and we all agree on that, I'm going to say that the funds are out there and available for any group. You know, the town itself could go and propose this, honestly. This is, it's not something where we have to be concerned that they're not going to be able to get the matching $32,000. Ripta has the funds available. They're waiting for community groups to apply for this program. And PDNRI is, they went through this process, I believe, in years past. Is that correct, Steve?
I can't advise you on whether they did or they didn't.
Okay, well, the way I understood it, they actually have talked to Ripta in the past before PDNRI has gotten revitalized itself in the past year or so.
There have been discussions. I think the real question was, I don't know if the design had been agreed on yet between what they wanted, what Ripta was willing to deal with, or the location, because Ripta also has interest in where the location is. So I'm not sure that there had been any definition to those issues at this point. Yes, I think that the Ripta money would be available to any group that comes forward. I think the question that Rachel raised, I think is a legitimate one as well, is if you do one of these bus shelters, are you also going to be asked to do additional bus shelters in different areas? And if so, are you going to need to establish some type of funds that is going to determine which ones you participate in and which ones you don't? But I don't think there's anything that's a written commitment at this point, but I'm not sure. I haven't seen that.
Right. Yeah, and I think in order to get a commitment from Ripta, you need to have some funds in order to initiate the process. That's where it stands. I think Representative Tanzi is very interested in making this project go forward. I think she said she's going to look for a legislative grant to help PDNRI out. Perhaps we can wait and see if she's able to secure that, and we can work from the contingency fund after that happens.
So that being said, I would have to agree with Carol then, and say if we could increase them by $1,000, that would be very helpful to them. I also agree with what you said about Wakefield being a little bit bigger, so maybe that's, I was just looking at it number-wise, but that makes sense.
All right. Well, before we get to that, let's, I'll call the question on the current resolution.
You don't need to call a question if you want to withdraw it.
Okay, I'll withdraw that until we have a better understanding. What was, we're going down my list, basically.
As far as, were you going to make any change to the $2,500 that they'd asked? They received $2,500. I heard somebody say they wanted to increase that to $3,000. I'm not sure, is that, is that still on the table?
Right. You know, I-
Were you going to leave that?
Carol had suggested to increase it. I would, I would like to see it increased to $3,000.
I'll go along with that.
And can you-
So I'll second that.
So you're, you're-
So it's $500.
I'm making a motion to give the Peasdale Revitalization Committee $3,000.
So that means we're giving them an extra $500.
Yes.
The budget calls for $2,500.
$2,500 to $3,000.
Yes.
All right.
So moved to discussion.
I am a merchant in Peasdale, and I'll fall back on my previous answer that I'm not interested in increasing any spending. I think the bus shelter is a great idea.
I have to agree with Joe on this one. I do, too. And if we do increase Peasdale, what are we going to do in downtown Wakefield with businesses? There are more businesses and more people who shop and walk those roads. We want to make Peasdale, and maybe that's a good investment to make it more shoppable, but at this point, unless we have earmarked funds for some, I don't know. I, I don't know. I'm not opposed.
Meg, I would say give them another $500, too, if we're going to give this one $500. That's, I would suggest. That's what we've done in the past.
I, I have to agree. I want to make this town as vibrant as possible, but I also have to, $500 is not going to break the backs of a lot of taxpayers, but the bottom line is, there are people in this town who are very concerned about how the money's being spent, so I want to be cognizant about that as well. So I guess I can live with $500 here and $500 there. I just am not willing to give away the store. I'm not.
Rachel, do you want to say something?
You know, I just, I'm very thankful for these village associations that are working so hard in the communities. I don't think they're asking for a lot of money, and I think what, the good that they're doing outweighs the money they're asking for. They do need a little bit of funding to continue what they've been doing, and the Peasdale revitalization is new, it's gone through a lot of changes. They certainly are really working very hard to change the image of Peasdale, to bring it to an arts community. I see just great progress made, and maybe that's where my concern for them being increased and maybe not Wakefield. Wakefield's more established, that Village Association, which I'm a member of, and I, trust me, I think they do great things. It's a little bit more established. They have a lot more business community involved. Peasdale, I just see as needing a little leg up right now as they get going on their projects.
And that's okay. And I agree with it. I, I do, and if you can bring business down there, and there are some businesses down there who absolutely love being there, and they are giving 150%, so if it is $500, so be it. I will absolutely agree. I just don't want to give away the store because there's so many other things that need-
Absolutely.
-our money, and our taxpayers are relying on us, and that's, that's important to me.
I'd just like to say that I think increasing it by 500, I'm sure is definitely welcome to the group. I think they asked for a specific amount more because they're working on a specific project that we agree would be good. So hopefully, this will be a down payment on a further commitment when we have more information on that project.
It shows that we're supporting them, like we're giving them some goodwill.
Absolutely.
I mean, we don't want to give them the whole enchilada because-
We don't have it.
-they're not ready for the project yet. We're not saying we don't like the project, but it shows goodwill and that we support what they're doing.
Absolutely.
All right, I'll call the question. All in favor of increasing the donation to PDNRI by $500, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Vote a four to one, that resolution carries. Was there a resolution to increase the budget of the Wakefield merchants that I heard? That people wanted to make, or?
I'm, I'm fine with it. I'm fine with it. Right, it's the only other one that's not on there. If I could, I would like to propose a resolution to give Washington County Coalition for Children $800, and they currently have been getting 400, they've asked for 1,000. I would like to see it increased by $400 and give them 800. Again, it's a, it's a small amount for a program that really reaches a lot of children in this community and does a lot of good.
I'll second that. Any further discussion for members?
I was inclined to give them, like, another 200. I don't know when the last time they asked for money, but 400's awful low. I was going to give them 600 altogether, but 800? Maybe we should meet in the middle, 700? This is like, let's make a deal.
I'd be okay with that. So I'll change the resolution to maybe we could give them seven, yes, to give them $700 instead of the 400 that they currently get.
Then when they ask next year.
Well, you know-
What happens is every year, people come back, because, you know, they always need more money.
I appreciate that. I do appreciate that, and there's a lot of this. I've looked it over very carefully. That's really the only, you know, one I'm looking at that was on my radar, so.
I'd go with 800, it doesn't matter, but I think they need a little more money. 700, 700.
But yeah, I think the original resolution is for 800.
It's eight.
Has that been amended, Daleton? There was not a-
We're having an auction up here.
Yeah, we're having an auction.
There was no second to the amendment, so the 800 stands.
Okay. Meg, do you have any thoughts on?
No. No, I'm all set. I'm not going to approve the 800, but that's just my own opinion.
You know, this was a group that I wasn't entirely familiar with prior to the work session. I've heard good things since then, so I'm willing to increase their, you know, their amount as well. So I'll call the question at this point.
Hey, the question?
This is for an increase of $400 to 2,800 for the Washington County, there you have it. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Signify the saying aye. Aye.
I guess aye, too, then. If everybody's going to approve it, because I'd be dissenting.
Nay.
I'm nay, too.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm a nay.
I vote of three to two, that resolution carries.
Hey, the next question that you had, Abel, if you're done with that one, is the, you had asked for consideration of a new full-time position of resource management in the planning department for resource, energy resources work.
Sure.
You had also suggested in your narrative, the memorandum that you submitted, that you saw it as a parallel position to that which we have for the GIS coordinator. Just for council's information, were that to be acted on and on a full-time basis, it would be in the area of $100,000 in cost.
Okay. And so I would make a resolution to add a full-time position. I'm not set on it being within the planning department, but a full-time position to focus on natural resource management, energy resources in particular.
Can we align the numbers?
Yes, if that's- Yes, if that's-
It would have to be, we would have to increase the budget by $100,000. We would then be, we would work within that appropriation for that position. The position, as, as I said, you're talking about, those would be all of the benefits associated with the position. As well as, it doesn't have any administrative cost as far as office setup for that person.
Okay. So yes, the, the resolution is for a new full-time position, $100,000 added.
It would be an increase of the planning department budget by $100,000 for the specific purpose of the of a person dedicated to natural resource management planning.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Alright, so my feeling with this proposed position is, well, it's similar to what a number of other communities have done. Well, Providence has a, a whole office of sustainability with, I think, three employees at this point. But Newport has a similar position and a second position of the Clean Cities Coordinator. There's a lot of potential for savings and revenue to be generated for the town. I think we've seen the planning department already be quite engaged in energy efficiency work and save the town tens of thousands of dollars. This would accelerate that. The idea came to me when I queried Steve about what the progress had been. A solar project for the landfill, the closed landfill. A similar project in, in East Providence, over two megawatts generates about greater than $40,000 a year for that city. This project on the landfill probably wouldn't generate that much for the town, but it would generate significant revenue. With revenue considerations, with energy efficiency savings, I think this position would be cost neutral for the town within a couple of years. I also think it's forward-thinking, given the fact that the governor's budget includes a Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank, which is going to open up a lot of opportunities for municipalities to encourage investments in residential and commercial renewable energy projects, but other, other projects as well. And I think we need somebody on staff if we're going to make those projects happen. South Kingstown is, is a partner with Newport and the Rhode Island Nursery and Landscape Association. And that group is on the verge of, of securing a two and a half million dollar grant, which is going to provide the town with significant funds, which could offset a lot of the cost with this position. So I think although it looks like a big price tag upfront, there's a lot of possibility to bring that price tag right down at the beginning, and then for it to be entirely offset and to start generating revenue for the town within a few years. So I would like us to consider, you know, making this investment for what it can gain us.
Well, I'm, I'm going to oppose the resolution. And here's why I believe that the current staff we have is already very forward-thinking. The, the comprehensive plan is very inclusive of environmental issues, energy conservation. As we heard during the budget hearings, John Schrock was in the process of putting together the RFP for the solar panels at the Superfund sites. I think we're ahead of the curve at this point. Can we do better? Always, you can reduce your carbon footprint. We have some, I think we have people in the planning department that are, are on it. They spend a lot of their time already on these issues. And as bigger proposals come along, maybe we could reconsider it at a later date, but for right now, that solar panel project at the Superfunds is, is already in place. It's, it's going to happen. So we don't need to hire another staff person and raise the budget by $100,000 for something we were actually in, in the process of doing before this council ever hit this bench. So, you know, I think we're ahead of the curve. Those issues will come, come, come up, and we'll take them one by one and, and see if there's, if there is grant money out there for us to hire this type of person. Maybe we can, could consider it at that time.
Well, like I just said, I think there is grant money that's coming our way for green jobs in particular. I'd just like to get us on the process of, of having this position now. It's, I don't think it's a case where we do have enough staff resources to, to meet all the potential project requirements in this area. I don't know, you know, Steve, you have an opinion. Do you think such a staff person could help the town leverage programs that are out there from National Grid, from the new distributed generation program, from the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank? I think there's, there's a lot out there, and Vin's plate is pretty full.
Abel, I don't want to talk against any proposal that the council makes. What I would say to you is that I think we've been very successful with the existing staff and have been a leader in energy conservation in the state with the existing resources that we have. Can we do more? We can allocate more time to that, that area. But again, I, I'm not sure that there's a necessity for a full-time position at this point. I mean, our carbon footprint, when I look, you know, I started looking at the energy savings that we have. In the last 12 months, we reduced from 1,362 metric tons down to 891. I don't think any other community can make those type of claims.
That's great.
All I'm saying to you is, is that we have this as a high priority, whether or not, if, if somebody said to me, "I'm going to give you $100,000 for resources in the community," would, I think that this would be the best way of spending it? I think there's probably other things that, that would come forward, but this is the council's decision to make, not mine. Certainly if we had another person, we would use that person to, to the greatest extent possible. But I can't tell you that it's a good or bad proposal.
Could you, assuming the grant comes through with RINLA, and the town ends up with $300,000 to $500,000, which is the latest that I've heard, do you think, how, what is the process going to be for using that money?
Talking about the grant with the, it would be administered through the, through the planning department. What specific actions the town's going to take? That grant is specifically to teach people how to do gardening, how to do different things in terms of planting of trees. It's to be able to provide education. It's, it's not to be, my understanding is that grant's not being used as far as building and infrastructure, but rather as far as a training program associated with teaching people how to be certified to be able to do farm-type activities or arborist activities, and certified as arborists. So I'm not really sure how much involvement the town's going to have with that. One of the things I'm looking at at this point, as far as CDBG, is I've got administrative expenses that are there that I could bring in a third party to administer that program and have Doug's time in the planning department freed up from CDBG purpose so that he would be managing any of the grants that came through, particularly this one that you just mentioned. But, you know, we normally don't ask for a position until we see that the workload exceeds what we, we can possibly do. And in a time when we're trying to limit budgets as much as we can, it's just not a position I would be recommending.
My understanding of the grant is not that it's limited to plantings. It's limited to green infrastructure job training, which is, I mean, certainly plantings that help groundwater infiltration. But beyond that, green infrastructure is targeted towards adaptability to climate change, involving mitigation as well. When I spoke to the executive director of RINLA, they said that we could use it to create a position within town government. So I do hope that we'll, we'll look at that possibility when it, when it arises.
Once we see what the grant can be used for, we would look at, at coming back to you in terms of how we would use those funds. But at this point, I mean, we dealt with that application, it's got to be back a, a year ago. I mean, I don't recall all the details within it, but most of it was for, for education and training purpose and for demonstration purpose on a limited basis. If there's administrative dollars that are available with that program, then we would probably need to hire somebody on a part-time basis to administer South Kingstown's section of it. But until I see how that grant lays out, I, I can't give you any definites on that.
Steve, is this the program that Maria Mack and the person from Newport, and what was the other? There were three towns that were chosen. It was us, Newport, and a diff, another town. I don't remember which one it was, but, I mean, they spoke mostly of education, training. I didn't hear anything concrete. I mean, it was a great program, but-
Right, I think the portion of, we don't have to get too much into this. But I, I would view it as somebody within the town who could help coordinate with URI to develop a jobs training program for people in the community, people around the state really, to get certification in green infrastructure. And we're, along with Newport, the two communities that are part of this grant.
What was the other one besides South Kingstown and Newport?
Just Newport, that's it.
Oh, that was it?
It involved university.
Oh.
Is there anyone making all these things a priority? Is there anyone in our current staff that we could just say this is a priority to?
We set, we set the administrative goals within the planning, the energy resources department. It also was a goal within John Schrock's operation. So depending on where the, where the grants are, and what those grants are to be used for, we would work with that. I also have a certified building manager for energy resource purposes already. That gentleman has been responsible for all of the implementation of the energy resource. With the, with his certification. And he's worked in conjunction with the planning department outside of his day-to-day role in terms of facilities management. So he would, so I mean, there would be a team that would continue to work on this based on what specific grants are out there.
Because I, you know, I appreciate everything you're saying, and it looks like that's not something that's going to go forward. I'm just wondering if we could stress to the current staff some of these issues and grants that are out there and, without creating the new position, put some of these things forward.
Rachel, if I might just add to this, since I've been sitting here, and I'm going on year number seven, we have been constantly on conservation, energy conservation, environmental issues. And we've made a commitment, and I, I think we're all still on the same page. But if there's a grant out there, Steve Alfred will find it, and he will find a way to make it useful in the community. I mean, he's a master at this. And so I say, until, if, until he says we need this person, I mean, I think we're just, we're just fluff. I mean, why are we hiring somebody when we have staff that's already on this?
Right.
I have great respect for what South Kingstown has done. I want us to be the leader in the state. I want us to be leader, because it saves us money and it's good for everybody.
I think we probably already are in many ways.
We can do more. I, I'm well aware of the programs that are out there and available.
We can do more, but without getting the grants and without getting additional funding, we, we look at the resources we have, and we do the best with the means and the staff that comes from this town, which is a wonderful town. But I can't see spending another 100. I, I'm worried, the taxpayers, that's, that's who we have to watch out for too. And we're here to toe the line for them. And I, I, I don't disagree with your point, Abel. I think it's a very good point. And I think anybody who looks into conservation issues, it's, it's a betterment of any community. I just can't see that spending right now. I just can't.
I, I under, I understand those concerns. I know that I probably come from a position where I'm a little more conscious of, of the programs that are out there and available. I think it would redound to the benefit of the town to make an investment like this. As I said, I think it would be cost neutral within two years, and this town is in the financial position where it actually can make those type of investments. That's the type of town we, we live in. The town manager has been doing a great job for 30-odd years. He's put us in a position where, we're one of those type of communities where we can decide to make those type of investments. Because they're good for, for the town economically in the run, long run, they're good for the planet as well. I understand that this resolution isn't going to carry today, but I do look forward to holding this conversation again when we get the grant money and see what the potential is.
I, I look forward to that, Abel. I do, because I think it's important. But where is the information? Do we have anything from those grants in front of us to make a decision on? We don't, and that's what concerns me a little bit. So I think it would be very prudent to get all the information, spread our cards on the table, look to see what's out there, and then make a very prudent decision. That's where I want to go. I'm not saying that it's, you know, against what we want to do by not hiring somebody. I'm just saying, I don't want to make a decision on something I haven't even read, seen, or know that much about, and shame on me for my ignorance. Shame on me. But I think we need that in order to make an educated, qualified decision at the table.
I'll withdraw that resolution.
Alright, the, the next item that was, was posted on the memorandum was school budget transfer that Joe had put, put forward to have discussion at the table.
Um, school budget, school department, the school committee is asking us for a 2% increase in funding. We heard about some cuts last Wednesday night.
Hold on, Joe, I think it's 1.41% at this point, or is that?
Their original request was that before we cut the 250,000?
Right. And, and then after their cuts, it was reduced. But it is still an increase, and I think I've made it fairly clear that I don't think we should be spending any more money. There are some new programs that they're talking about doing. And I understand, we don't talk to them about the way that they spend their money. We only tell them how much. I stated last week, Washington County is ranked in the top 4% in the, in the country for property taxes, and Steve pointed out, we should carve off Block Island and we fare better. But I think a lot of our taxpayers are still challenged. It's a very challenging economy for a lot of our taxpayers. So I would make a resolution to level fund.
It's me to do what?
Level fund the school department, the school committee.
Joe, just to, to make sure we have all the information on the table. The increase right now for the transfer is a $699,686 increase, which equates to a 1.41% increase over the, the current year appropriation. And what you're requesting is that the current year appropriation of $49,614,070 be maintained for the 15, 16 year.
That's my resolution, yes.
Is there a second? I will second it for the sake of having discussion, Joe. So I, I heard much of your reasoning, but please, go on.
Yep.
What page is that on in your binder?
I'm just looking at the front page. Right on the budget message.
Well, and that has been changed with the reductions from last week.
Right. That's been changed, right.
They carved out $255,000.
How much are they asking for in an increase, Steve, exactly?
699...
699, 686.
699, 686.
But wasn't some of that being used for painting, refurbishing?
The capital program is separate from that.
Okay.
There was, there'll be capital dollars that will be expended that are outside of the operating budget. The amount that's in your general fund is simply the transfer necessary to balance their operating budget.
Okay.
It does include the first-year capital budget, which included the $300,000 item, Joe, that you would...
For the one-to-one, yep.
For the, for the computers.
And it also includes the pilot for the dual-language.
Right, that's in the operating budget.
As the operating budget, right.
The only, you had brought up the capital budget.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure you...
Right. And I, I guess from the discussion last week, I learned that, that this is supposedly the second year, but that the pilot year really didn't get implemented fully, so...
It did not.
You can, you can argue it's a new program, you can argue it's not a new program, so...
I, I think we gave them 50%. We was, they were supposed to buy laptops for 50% of the ninth grade. And apparently they didn't do that. They, they got them for the teachers instead. I think that was the explanation. And obviously they have to train the teachers before they can bring it to the children.
Well, and now they're looking at it for, for two years.
So initially, the idea was that was going to be the pilot program, and then we were going to fund this year for ninth and 10th grade.
Yeah. I appreciate you want to not raise any taxes, and I certainly am aware of the burden on the taxpayer. It's, it's been tough economic times. I, I also feel though that the school committee did a really good job at keeping it as close to level as they can, and the increase we're looking at is, you know, in such a big budget, is minimal.
And some of this is salary and personnel increases.
Right, right.
Which, they're contractual.
No, I understand that. I said that in my first explanation, that, you know, so I'll give you my own personal experience. If my revenue is down and I have employees to pay, you know, eventually I have to find it somewhere.
Right.
And maybe it's in buildings, or maybe it's in programs.
I do think they have to take the, a look at redistribution, I think they were calling it, right? Possibly closing one of the middle schools and consolidating.
We do have to look at the schools, because the schools are the generation of our future. The children that are there, that are given task to learn, have to have, have the tools necessary to become successful for when they're out of there, when they're down the road, when they're in college, when they're out of college. It's our responsibility, in my mind, I could be wrong, but it's our responsibility to educate our children to the umpteenth degree necessary to make them who they should be to represent the town of South Kingston, or themselves, if you will. I do want to hold the line. I want to toe the line, not a question about it. I'm as concerned as Joe is that the money was allocated last year for these computers that wasn't used for those computers. That concerns me. You know, they used it on something else, obviously, and we can't dictate where it's used. But I do feel compelled to say the education of our children is vital, is absolutely vital to this community.
Agreed.
I, I have to say one other thing, Joe, that when they said we were number 13 in technology in the schools, that's, that really is concerning to me. So if this will bring us up to date 300,000, I mean, you have to be technologically advanced in this society. Any kid, all these kids aren't going to get ahead unless they are. So, and, and the idea, I think, maybe will help you, less money in the future will be spent on textbooks. That's what they're claiming, because they're not going to, going to have all these programs online, so...
Yeah, I asked that in our first work session, and they couldn't give me...
Yeah.
An idea.
Well, some, I think, some of the textbooks online do cost. There is a fee to them, and I think that's, yes, but...
The per-seat cost, and I understand that.
Right.
But I thought they'd be able to translate it for me. This is why we have the discussion.
Well, I think some of that is uncharted territory for them.
I, I'm pretty convinced on the, the one-to-one computer program. I'm a little reluctant as far as the Spanish immersion. I, I just don't know how that'll work, but...
Yeah, but again, we don't get to decide.
Right, we don't get to decide. So depending on what we, even if we were to sit here and say, we're going to cut this or we're going to cut that, they're going to spend it as they see fit. They're the, you know, they're elected for that, they're the expert.
Carol, you said it in the first, in the first work session.
Yep.
You're going to cut football and music.
I'm going to go nuts. Well, not just football, sports, arts, music.
I understand.
You will see a ruckus on your hand. If you cut music, drama, sports, that will be a ruckus.
And the late bus.
Oh, the good old late bus. So personally, I can't see cutting the, the school budget, which this essentially would do, since they're losing revenue on the state side. I think we are used in South Kingston to excelling academically. Our scores have started to fall. We're number nine in terms of scoring now. We used to be in the top three. And, you know, I don't know if the programs that they're recommending are, are the best solution. I, I have concerns like other people on the council, but I can't, I can't punish them for, for trying. I think it, there should be some perspective taken as well when we're looking at what the schools are asking for. When you look around, the state school districts are, are asking for significant increases in funding that are in the same position as we are. So I think they are trying to keep costs down from what I've seen. So I think, you know, for all those reasons, I can't vote for this resolution.
Call the vote. I'm a big boy.
So, so what would the vote be? So cool...
The vote is to level fund and to cut $699,686. That's the vote. Right.
Want to move forward with the resolution, Joe?
Sure.
Okay. Call the question on this resolution. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
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 The resolution fails by a count of one to four.
The next question that Joe had posed was a discussion relative to the community recreation center cost, including fund balance transfer.
So Steve, I, I might need a little help with the mechanics of this, but the first thing I'd like to address is the million dollars out of the fund balance.
Does that need to be a resolution and seconded?
Well, I'm, I'm asking for the, Steve, for the resolution because that was in the capital improvement budget, but I understood that we could discuss it at, at this point as well.
Yeah, I think that when we adopted the capital budget, and in the capital budget, we had a display that showed that the cost of the project was going to be 6.15 million dollars. And we showed the funding sources as being a combination of municipal bonds, as well as unassigned fund balance and recreation impact fees. And it would, the way the capital budget laid out was that the million dollars would come from undesignedated fund balance. And I said to you at that point that when we look at the undesignedated fund balance at this time, if you look at page M12 of the budget message, it shows that undesignedated funds are anticipated to be at 9.2 million dollars, subsequent to us having the $675,000 transferred into the 2015, 16 year, having encumbrances of 40,000 that would be reserved, and having an operating surplus of around 700,000. That works out to 12.2% of the budget that would be adopted at the 75,701,606. The, I think the question that, that, if I understood it, Joe, was can the town afford to use money from undesignedated fund balance to fund a capital project? And I'm not sure what...
Yeah, I don't think that was my question. I, I thought you, you described pretty clearly that a 12.2% fund balance was substantial enough.
Correct, and...
12,478 was substantial enough to protect our low bond rating and all that. My, my issue at this point is, I think if we have a million dollars extra in the fund balance, it came from the taxpayers, and before we spend it on a project, it should go back to the taxpayers. But I, I'm just not sure that the mechanism is, is here.
I think that, you know, the council has traditionally worked with fund balance based on different projects. As an illustration, money was transferred from fund balance to pay for the fiber that will be installed throughout the community. Money was forwarded to, to be held in reserve for the super fund program of a million dollars. Money was set aside for affordable housing. So all of those things are things that the council has done, not as a component of the budget document. But I think in this case, Joe, the previous council had set the project at 6.15 million dollars, and had said to the general public, with any of the disclosure documents that we provided on that bond issue, that we were anticipating the project at the 6.15, and that we were anticipating that there would be a million dollars that would be coming out of fund balance to be able to balance that program. We would ask the council traditionally in June to make various budget transfers, whether it's transfers from the general fund going into any of the capital funds that we have, or into this specific fund for that million dollars. And the question would really be addressed in that meeting in June. My concern at this point is that we're moving forward with the development of the construction documents for a project targeted at the 6.15. If it was the council prerogative to say, we're not going to put a million dollars in for that purpose, then certainly there'd only be 5.1 million dollars available for that project, and the project wouldn't go forward at all. So unless we were directed to revise that million dollars in cost out of that construction project. But I think that the public was well aware of what the intention was at the time those bonds issue, the bonds were considered in the November referendum for the general election. But that's the prerogative of the council. If three people on this council say that they're not going to transfer the million dollars into the construction fund, then that project is going to be delayed until such time as monies are, are appropriated for that specific purpose.
Right. Well, I still question whether we should be billing it at all, based on the cost at a time when, again, our taxpayers are challenged, and I'm still very concerned about the competition issue with private taxpaying businesses. I have been, I mean, I made that clear last July when I attended a meeting where we approved, this council approved, or that council approved, 384,000, I think, to get the project started. My feelings haven't changed on that, so I, I, I guess I wanted this council to have the discussion about the project in general. And, and whether there is an issue with the cost when the economy is still declining or at least faltering, and the competition issue. You know, I think a relative example is the skip program in South Road School. Since that skip program opened, we have two private preschools that have moved out of the community, and one has closed. Competition had to have played somewhat of a role in that. I don't want to, I don't want to go down the road of the skip program. I was using it as a...
No.
Have I heard a, a distinct resolution?
No, I was, I was looking for the mechanism.
I, I just want to say one thing, though, Joe. The people have spoken. They knew that this million dollars was going to have to be transferred from the unassigned fund balance when the project went out there. We were very clear. And I think there were many meetings with us. There were also quite a few meetings with the rec committee that was formed, and the people voted well over, you know, pretty overwhelming that they wanted to put the money out there for this rec center.
Right. Two of the bond issues were passed during a robust economy. The third one was, was recent.
But, that's right, but this last one speaks even louder to me. I thought by putting this on the ballot, maybe the people would say, we can't afford it, and if they said that, then went up, you know, we weren't going to build it.
Yeah, you, you can't...
But they came out and said, in spite of the fact of the economy, we have the need, recreation is important to them, and, and they want this. So I, I, I think the people have spoken, and, and I don't know how we can turn back the tide.
And Carol, you may be right, but you...
We're having...
We can discuss.
Yeah, we can.
We can.
You may be right. You'd be, all of us would be challenged to, to name the last bond revenue issue that failed in Rhode Island. So they're almost automatic.
I don't know why that is, but maybe...
Can I just say something about competition? I, I look at the glass as half-full instead of half-empty. I work on a busy road, Post Road in North Kingston, in a kitchen and bath area. There are four kitchen and bath design companies in a five-mile strip. And if you want your light to shine, you try to do whatever you have to do to market your business and make it better. I understand what you're saying, Joe. I do. But competition is healthy to a certain degree, and you bring yourself to the best foot forward that you have, and you give your customers the best service, the pricing that you can allow, and make your business shine. Do I sometimes see that we get less business because there's four of us in five miles? Probably people go to other businesses that do the same thing that I do. But the bottom line is, I will always be out there fighting, marketing, and knowing how to do my business better. And I, I have to disagree. It's going to take away from a lot of the businesses in town. Sure, there are people that are going to be interested, they're going to be curious, they want to see what it's all about. But you make yourself who you are, and I honestly think competition on Route One, for me, has been positive, because they're going to shop the whole strip.
I got, I don't disagree with you. This is all private competition. The first-year pro forma budget in, for this rec center says they're going to have operational expenses of 350,000, user fees of 25,000. That means we have to subsidize 325,000 of their operation. No private recreational facility has the ability to have the...
To do that.
...the government fund the imbalance.
Rachel, you got something to say?
Going back, I, I agree with Carol. This was voted on, it was passed. I'm for the project and will support it 100% all the way.
I just, since we're making general comments here, I'd like to add my, my feeling that the economy isn't quite as bad as people here are pointing it out to be. Our unemployment rate in town has gone down drastically over the past year. Housing prices are going up. These are trends that are seen nationally. I would say that also our property tax rate is not as, as high as you feared, Joe. I was looking at it...
The tax rate, no. Total tax obligation.
So at, at 154 and change, there are 21 different states that have a higher tax rate than South Kingston does. So it's, it's not the burden on our taxpayers that it's being made up.
Abel, respectfully, your mill rate has little to do with what your total tax bill is in relation to median income, or income in general.
Are there any other resolutions to be made?
I give.
You did your discussion.
I'm good.
Do you want to vote on this?
No. There's no motion.
No motion.
Yep.
I mean, this real question will come back in June. As far as the actual council resolution, that'll be questioned at that point. As I said to you in previous meetings, if the project could have been less than that, you'd be able to reduce. If it comes in more than that, you're going to have a question and answer as far as the million.
Right.
So.
Understood.
Let's hope that it's something that we can get some.
Get another chance.
We get to that. The, the last comment came from Meg, and it wasn't asking to increase, and we've, Harry Gallery, and it wasn't, it was, and we've already dealt with the Washington County Regional Planning. So I guess the next question would be, is there were two items that were submitted to us subsequent to the manager's budget being prepared. One was the Conservation Commission has requested three thousand dollars to be added to the budget for a tree planting program. They wanted this in addition to the eight hundred and fifty dollars that we had traditionally provided to that organization. Staying on Conservation Commission, in the past, our funding level of eight hundred and fifty dollars was to provide subsupports, supports to other agencies. One of the agencies that it was providing in the past was the Southern Rhode Island Conservation District. And what they requested this year is that the eight fifty not go out to any of the smaller agencies that they had traditionally funded, and that they would use the eight fifty for training within the Conservation Commission itself. So you've got really, kind of interesting, the Conservation Commission says they don't want to fund the agency, Southern Rhode Island Conservation District, yet they submitted a request for increased funding so that they can fund that request. So you've got two requests, one for the tree program, which is a three thousand dollar add to the tree budget, and second would be between a two and a five hundred dollar appropriation for Southern Rhode Island Conservation District, which this year is in your budget for zero.
I just don't even understand this. The Conservation Committee always paid for these trees, like all these trees that are listed on this sheet.
No, no. That was a grant. There's a grant program under the America the Beautiful. What this did last year was it provided for the money that was necessary for that three thousand dollars to pay for the trees. What the Conservation Commission would like to see is the program continued in the future while the grant dollars won't be there, so they're asking you to provide the three thousand dollars that in the past, that in the past year came from the three thousand dollar grant.
I'm willing to increase it slightly, but I don't know if I want to give three thousand dollars. I think conservation is important, but, again, we get so limited information. I'd be willing to meet them halfway, fifteen hundred, but I'm not really looking to increase that by three thousand.
Is that a proposed resolution?
Oh, no, you can be, I'm sorry.
Well, do they have a list of people who want trees at this point?
No, they would solicit the proposals again, Carol.
Yeah.
And, I mean, the key to their program is that they want to be able to provide the cost of a tree, teach the person who's going to be responsible for the tree on the private property how to maintain and protect that tree. So there certainly will be substantial interest in that, in that program, if they're going to be able to provide, you know, free trees to be sited on private property.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Are they, are people requesting trees, or are they going out to solicit people, saying we've got free trees?
They are, they are asking for people to submit applications to participate. That's how the program operated last year.
At this point, I mean, if I could, I would propose a resolution to keeping their budget the same at eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Is that already in the budget, or is it?
Yes.
Yeah, there's no change, there would be no change.
Okay, so that's.
So, is your resolution to.
Keep it the same.
To do nothing.
To maintain.
Then I would second that, Rachel.
Do we, do we need a resolution to say, do the same thing? Isn't it already?
You don't need a resolution, really, you would just move on.
Do I hear any resolutions to increase the funding for the Conservation Commission? I guess is the question. And did I hear that something about Hera? Hera had asked for more money to.
Hera had not, have, had never received money, to my knowledge, or at least not since I've been here. Zero thousand, they're asking for ten thousand.
My concern with them is they just asked, they came in asking for too much, and I don't know what it's for, really, that kind of money.
When, when she spoke, it was my understanding that she wanted to keep her, extend her hours and pay staff, which I, you know.
I'm in disagreement with that because she wasn't looking to expand her space, she wasn't looking for a different location, and as you say, she didn't have any clear-cut delineation in terms of where that money was going to be spent, or what they wanted to do with it for the most part. To come in here having zero funding, forever, I guess, to go to ten thousand dollars, that would be a button that would be hard-pressed for me to beep on.
I think the arts in downtown Wakefield are important.
Oh, of course.
And I think we're all supportive of that, but I agree, it was, it was a big number, but I wouldn't be in support of.
I'm not in support of it, and it's on the record.
I don't think anybody's proposing the full ten thousand. Is there anybody who wants to propose that they get anything?
All right, so if there's, if you have no proposals, then the question would be, are there any other items within the budget that was presented to you as the manager's budget that you'd like revision, additions or deletions to? If there isn't.
Can I, I have one. I, I just want to bring up the Wakefield Merchants Association, or the, what's the new name of them, the village?
Village Association.
Village Association. I was really interested in the, their idea of putting up the banners like they have in Narragansett. And I think they look great, and I think they might, you know, promote more of the lively center of, is that what they want to do in Peastale also?
Still with them as well.
Yeah. I would like to give them some money to do that, because I think, I was really impressed when Narragansett did that, and I think it would be a nice take for Wakefield and Peastale. I don't know. I was initially going to say a thousand dollars, but I'd be willing to negotiate. Or if nobody wants to do it, I just want to make that.
I would say five hundred, just like we did for Peastale, an increase of five hundred, I would be okay with.
All right. So I'll make that motion to increase Wakefield Village Association by five hundred.
Second.
So moved, more discussion. I guess my question on this, Steve, did they request any extra funding?
They requested three thousand.
They requested a full three thousand dollar.
Three thousand more.
Contribution to go toward the lighting that they do for the holiday season and for the banners. The banners program is one that is going to take some work before it comes to fruition because, right now, they're requesting pole locations, fifty-three different poles. They're also looking for banners that would be five feet in length. From a wind loading perspective, Grid would never allow that. Secondarily, the problem is that Grid's concerned that its use of their pole for a business purpose. Things like Narragansett, talk about season's greetings, or come to historic Narragansett, those type of, these are looking more to try to bring business into, for the commercial purpose. And so they're going to need to talk with Grid at some length at this point. We're acting as a facilitator to, in terms of trying to get the different parties to agree on how they can coexist, but this is a, this will be a major program if it gets underway.
So Steve, are you saying they would have a different banner on each pole, doing, for each business?
I'm not, I'm not aware as to what the banners would be, but they, what Grid is saying is that they are not looking for banners that promote commercialism. What they're looking at is, you know, the types of season greeting-type things.
Yeah. Well, I like the ones that have a Narragansett.
Well, I've seen some of the proposed designs for these banners, and I'm not sure that this is, you know, what they've set on, but they were going to be different. One was going to be, you know, for restaurants like Eat in downtown Wakefield, and another one would be Shop, and another one, you know, so they were certainly focused on the commercial.
I thought it was going to be more like, you know, historic, welcome to Wakefield.
No, no, it's going to be like Eat, Shop.
Like they do in Narragansett, they have the logo of the towers.
No.
Hmm. Well, then, I'll change my mind, then. I don't know enough about it.
Yeah, because if they want to have their own specific logo, then, you know, a business, then they should be paying that.
Yeah, yeah.
We should not be paying for that.
No, I agree.
I think, as, the only thing I'm saying to you is, is that they specifically requested three thousand dollars from the town, but I think that that was not for the banners as it was for the lighting for the poles in the, in the downtown area. And to be able to maintain that, and I think also, as far as coordination with the plantings that are.
Yeah, I think that's one of the things they had said, is they wanted to buy plants for all, so that it was uniformity in all the plants, poddings, because right now, the businesses are responsible to plant their own flowers.
Well, then I'll, I'll stay with the motion, because the flowers and the lights are well with it. But I'll take away the banners, because I didn't realize it was so commercial.
All right, so you're looking at an amendment that would increase from three thousand to thirty-five hundred?
Yeah.
Is that what the, what the motion is?
Yes.
Is any, are there any further comments, questions? All right, let's call a question. All in favor of increasing the budget to thirty-five hundred from three thousand for the Wakefield Village Association? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
By a vote of four to one, that resolution carries. Are there any other resolutions proposed for this budget? All right, well then, I would entertain.
I have, maybe I'll do this in discussion, go ahead. Question.
I would entertain a motion to pass the preliminary budget as amended, or is that?
You're asking to pass a preliminary town council budget in the amount of seventy-five million, seven hundred and three thousand, zero, zero, six dollars, which is an increase of one thousand, four hundred dollars over the town manager's recommended budget. Is that, that what your motion is?
How much of a, what's the percentage over last year, Steve, if you don't mind my asking? I don't know if you have it there, but.
It's an eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-dollar increase, which would be a 1.11% increase.
All right, well, then, that sounds better, because on page M4, when we additionally met and talked about it, it was originally eight ninety-one, one sixty-eight, which was 1.32%.
We're talking about property taxes, we're talking about the increase in the budget.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm on the wrong page.
Again, this is a 1.1% increase over the prior year for eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. As far as what the property taxes would be, the property taxes are going to have to increase by that fourteen hundred dollars. As far as the overall tax rate increase, based on new roll estimates that I'm using at this point, we're probably going to be putting the budget out at eight cents, down from the ten. That's based on updated numbers on motor vehicles and updated numbers as far as real estate is concerned. So my forecast at this point would be that we would be at, at eight cents of an increase on the existing tax rate. So the, we would be looking at a projected tax rate for next year at fifteen dollars and fifty-six cents, down from the fifteen fifty-eight that we had taken through the budget process. That would mean that you are looking at eight hundred ninety-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars in new property tax dollars for a 1.32% increase. Your overall expenditure increase is at 1.1, but the reason that is the case is that because your third-party revenues are less in next year's budget.
Well, I will make the motion to approve that budget that you just said.
I'll second that.
Steve, I just have a question, because the Southern Rhode Island Chamber is in this budget, and I'm on the board. Do I have to stay away from that part of it?
I don't see that this has any specific gain to you, personal gain to you, so, I mean, I don't think there's a need to abstain from, from that vote.
I just want to say that we had this issue with Polly Eddy at the Thundomiss, and didn't she have to refrain from voting in the final budget, or in the whole process? But I would say the rest of us, I have no problem with you voting, Joe, and I think if we.
I don't, but I don't want to create a conflict.
We said that with Polly, but she still didn't vote.
Because Joe's wife works for the chamber, too. I mean, I withdrew from National Grid.
If she's working for the chamber, I would suggest that you recuse yourself.
I did that.
And what, what I would suggest is that you would be able to vote on the budget exclusive of the appropriation.
Yeah.
For the chamber, and then let the council four members vote specifically on that, so that, either that or what you can do.
That's fine. That's fine.
There's a number of ways you can do it. I think probably the best way for Dale's purposes would be to have you abstain from the vote, yet to provide a statement in the, in the discussion on whether you would have supported the budget as presented, except for the relationship on that account.
So abstain from the whole budget discussion.
I think you would have to abstain from that, but you would be able to at least place on the record that whether or not the budget was something that you would be, would be adoptable.
That does seem overbroad, that he would have to abstain from the whole budget.
I think that, you know, as I said, there's a number of different ways to do it, but I would, I think that you could have two votes. One vote, which would be for the town budget exclusive of the contribution to the Chamber of Commerce.
Why don't we do that?
As I presented.
All right.
And then have the council amend that budget with a vote of four people, increase it by the, whatever the dollar amount is in for the chamber at this point.
I'll make that motion, that we vote on the budget as presented by Steve Alfred and amended by this town council, exclusive of the south, of the, of the Southern Rhode Island Chamber of Commerce.
Ten nine thousand dollars.
Account.
So essentially, you're voting on a budget that would, Dale will record it as nine thousand dollars less than the number we gave.
Yep.
Okay.
And then, the four of you will then vote to appropriate nine thousand dollars into that budget to, to increase it to the dollar amount that we had.
Yep.
Originally stated, which was the seventy-five, seventy-five million, seven hundred and three thousand, six dollars.
All right, let's, let's go one at a time. We'll do the first one.
Right, before we get there, I just want, Joe, this budget that potentially you're going to vote to approve does have higher tax rate than the previous year.
So you're assuming I'll approve.
No, I mean, if you're not going to approve it anyway, then I don't know if it matters that we take this separate vote.
I want to cross all the Ts, I don't want any appearance.
Yeah, let's just go ahead and vote. He should vote. He should vote. It looked bad.
Yes.
Oh, yes. He should definitely vote, no matter which way it is.
Right.
Let's frame the motion. It would be a motion to adopt.
All right, I'll, I'll say it. Motion to adopt the budget as presented by Steve Alfred and amended by this town council, exclusive of the account which is labeled Southern Rhode Island Chamber of Commerce.
All right, I'll second that.
So moved. Any discussion on this budget? All right, all in favor of the motion, signify. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
And now I'll make a motion that we increase the budget by the $9,000, which has been awarded to the Southern Rhode Island Chamber of Commerce and is included in the town manager's budget.
Second that.
So moved. Any discussion on this budget?
The first vote that they had should be at the $75,694,006, which is net 9,000. So the vote that four voted yes, one voted no, was for $75,694,006. Now, the motion before the council with Joe...
Recusing, right?
Recusing himself is to increase the budget just adopted at $75,694,006 to, by $9,000 to $75,703,006 for the specific purpose of funding the Southern Rhode Island Chamber of Commerce.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on this budget? All right. All in, all in favor of the amended budget, including funding for the Chamber of Commerce? Signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
And a recusal.
Recusal.
I won't die tonight. I'll sign it tomorrow.
By a vote of four to zero, that budget carries. And with that, that takes care of our one agenda item. Is there any commentary from the community? All right, then.
Looks like 6:33.
At 6:33, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second. So moved.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You're adjourned.